Good evening. Yeah, really. I'd like to call this meeting of the Temecula City Council to order. First, I have to raise my chair up, so I can see over my, over the counter here. Welcome. Let's acknowledge the prelude music we had this evening. Kaitlin Hetzko.
I'm Kaitlin.
Kaitlin, thank you. And Jeffrey Kim. Thank you. It's always a little disheartening for us is because we usually have a executive session upstairs before we, as today, just barely made it down here. So a lot of times, we miss that music. So I hope everybody enjoyed it. We'll try to come down a little earlier next time. Okay, let's open up with an invocation this evening by Pastor Luke Kirkendall of Southwest Christian Church. Pastor, you're here. And then if you'd remain standing after that for the flag salute to be led by Councilmember Matt Ron tonight.
Thank you very much. Would you please bow your heads and pray with me? Holy God, you seem to establish things in an orderly fashion. You reveal your glory to creation in a myriad of ways. And in your sovereignty, you have chosen to allow men and women to govern themselves. You have appointed men and women to represent their fellow man. And I pray that tonight, this body of men and women would represent their fellow man in a gracious way for their benefit and for ours. May they resist the urge to represent men like the first man Adam did and thus bring sin upon the world. Instead, may they represent man in a beneficial way like the second man, like the second man Adam, like Christ himself. Jesus took on the sins of a people who did not deserve his kindness. He did the good that they could not do themselves. His, his representation brought salvation to sinful men. And may these representatives before me mirror Christ and lay down their own desires and pursue the high calling you have granted them. May they put others first. May they faithfully care for those created in your image and specifically for those within Temecula. And in regards to the decisions that are made tonight, would you grant them wisdom? And when it comes to listening to the voices of those they represent, would you grant them compassion? We plead these things in the name of Jesus. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor.
Hey, can everybody please face the flag? Put your hand over your heart and join me. And I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, we have a few presentations tonight, but before we do, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Nigard?
Here.
Councilmember Ron?
Here.
Councilmember Washington?
Here.
Mayor Comachero.
I'm here, too. Thank you, gentlemen, for that little tandem. Okay. We have three Eagle Scouts that we're honoring this evening. And, you know, we kind of always say the same thing, but it's always true that this is a remarkable community. And whereas most communities will, they're lucky if they can honor an Eagle Scout once or twice a year, it seems like we're doing it, you know, three or four at a time. And so it really speaks an awful lot to our young people, their character, their integrity. And we love it, so keep them coming. Mr. Washington, would you help me tonight if you'd take these two? And I'll keep this one to read. But before you leave, who are we honoring? No, I don't look at those things. Connor Edwards, if you would come up forward? No, because I have to read. Unless you want to read it, you can do that. Jonathan Sanchez and Christian Edwards Gibson. Just come on up front. We have a certificate of achievement for all three of you. And you'll also notice we have a special pin that we had made especially for occasions like this. If I recall, it was Mrs. Edwards who first came up with the idea. So I know in looking at your sashes over there, you just don't have enough badges. So we're going to give you another one, see if you can find a place for it. This particular certificate is for Connor Edwards, and so I'll read it. "The City of Temecula Certificate of Achievement. The City Council of the City of Temecula commends the outstanding achievements of Connor D. Edwards of Troop Number 309. We congratulate Connor for his achievement on achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. We are proud to present Connor with this award and wish him success in his future accomplishments. In witness thereof, I have here to affix my hand and seal this 10th day of February 2015, and it's signed Jeff Comachero, Mayor." So congratulations, guys. And one of the things we require is that you tell us a little bit about your Eagle project. So whoever wants to go first, have at it. Let us know your name, so we know which one you are. Don't fight over it.
I worked at the Escondido Humane Society down in Escondido. And what I did was I renovated the stray animal evaluation area.
Great. Next.
My name's Christian Gibson, and I built storage cubbies for Rancho Community Christian School sports teams. And they're located in the, the modulators by the middle school for their football team and their soccer team.
Good.
Hi, I'm Connor Edwards, and I did my project for the City of Murrieta Veterans Memorial. And I placed plaques and boulders with different quotes representing veterans and their service to our country.
Terrific. That's well done. And we've got three of you here. One did something in Escondido, one did something in Murrieta. Where's Temecula? But no, that's very honorable and good work, and we appreciate what you've done for your community. So congratulations, guys.
Mr. Mayor, could I just give a quick shout out to the Boy Scouts here also in the audience? Can you guys all stand up?
And you're from Troop- Thank you. Hey, nice to have you here, guys. Appreciate it. Okay, this takes us to the part of the agenda where we set aside time for public comments. Total of 30 minutes is provided, so members of the public may address the City Council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the City Council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, request to speak form must be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the city addressing public comments on the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filled out, must be filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing that item. And each speaker on those items is limited to five minutes. So Madam City Clerk, do we have any speakers tonight?
We do not have any speakers under public comments. We do have one speaker under consent item number five.
Okay, great. Then we'll, we'll address that in a moment. Before we get to consent calendar, any council reports? Mr. Nigard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to let everybody know, we're building a special needs inclusive play area over at Margarita Community Park. And we've set a tentative ribbon-cutting date for the, I believe it's the-
Twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth? Twenty-fifth?
Yeah, I believe that two o'clock Wednesday.
Yeah, it's Wednesday, 25th, 2:00 p.m. Hope everybody comes out. And of course, we'll know more about this as soon as we get it situated. But that's the tentative date, and it's probably going to be the permanent date.
Thank you, Mr. Nigard. Dr. Ron?
I just wanted to talk a little bit about some meetings I had over the last couple of weeks with residents at Fountain Glen Apartments and others around the community, mostly focused on senior issues. And one of the, one of the topic, you know, topics that came up, of course, was rent control. But then the conversation spanned a variety of other topics, from OSHA programs to, you know, transportation needs, senior center exercise programs and so forth. And so while I'm not on the subcommittee that necessarily would address this, I know a few years ago, or a couple of years ago, we had done a sort of a youth master plan for the city. And I'd like to see if maybe we could work with the city manager to identify a path forward to create a similar program for a senior master plan in addressing more holistically senior issues in the city.
Very good. Thank you. If I might suggest, certainly support that. Mr. Adams, maybe you could do the necessary research, approximately what the cost would be of that effort, and then we can consider including it in the upcoming budget.
Sure, absolutely.
Very good. Okay, any other reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item one, waive the reading of the standard ordinances and resolutions. Item two, approve the action minutes of January 20th, 2015, and January 27th, 2015. Number three, approve the list of demands. Item four, approve the city treasurer's report as of December 31st, 2014. Item five, which will be pulled for a speaker, is approve the policy regarding invocations at city council meetings. Item six, authorize a dog license fee amnesty program, and that's on the agenda at the request of Councilmember Edwards. Item seven, approve a purchase and installation agreement and the Third Amendment to the Minor Maintenance Services Agreement with Innovative Document Solutions for the Canon copiers and printers. Item eight, approve an agreement with RBF Consulting for the environmental initial study for Art Gaitan's Mexican restaurant, Mexico Cafe, rather. Item nine, approve the Seventh Amendment to the Professional Engineering Services Agreement with RBF Consulting for design of Interstate 15, State Route 79, South Ultimate Interchange, PW 04-08. Item 10, award a construction contract to LDCO, Inc., for the fire station, 73 living quarters upgrade, PW 13-07. Item 11, accept improvements and notice of completion for the citywide slurry seal fiscal year 2014-15, PW 14-06. Item 12, approve payment to Riverside County flood control of the City of Temecula share of the regional municipal stormwater permit of the Santa Margarita watershed for fiscal year 2014-2015. And item 13, adopt ordinance number 15-01, amending section 10.28.010D of the Temecula Municipal Code regarding prima facie speed limits on certain streets. And this is the second reading as required of that ordinance. We know we're going to pull item five for a speaker. What else would you like to do? So if you want, is that a motion on the balance?
Motion on the balance.
Exclusive of item five?
Yes.
Is that your second?
I made the motion. That is my motion.
I'll take the second.
Okay, you got it. Thank you. Please cast your vote. That motion does carry unanimously. Why don't we have a brief staff report on, on item five before we hear the speaker? Who's going to provide that? Madam City Clerk?
Sure.
Stuart, go ahead.
I would be happy to provide that staff report. And the, and the city attorney, I would ask that he chime in as necessary. The staff report is basically, the, the item is before you for technical housecleaning purposes only. Effectively, there is no change in the way that the city performs its invocations. In light of recent case law in 2014, the Lancaster case, the court upheld a written policy in Lancaster. And the City of Temecula is making sure that we also have a written policy consistent with our current practice and to go ahead and make sure that we're consistent with what the court's ruling is as well.
Okay, so we're doing the same thing as all we've done, we've always done. We're just putting the policy in writing.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff?
Move approval.
Wait a minute, we got a speaker. Can we have the speaker, please?
The speaker is Wayne Hall.
Mr. Hall, good evening.
Teachable moment. Item five, why are we discussing it tonight? Well, there's a simple reason. It's that quite a few years ago, when Temecula was a young city, vibrant as it is today. Good job. Somebody wrote a letter to our city clerk saying that if you use the words "under God" when you say the Pledge of Allegiance, and if you have a prayer, didn't matter what religion, I will contact the, let me get this right now, ACLU, is that correct? I can't remember the times or dates, but I do remember one thing. The city council ignored it. Thank you. It wasn't until later it went to court, and then, of course, it was settled. But the funny part about this I want to bring up is how many cities in California knuckled under? How many of them? Oh, don't sue me. We won't do this because we might get sued. But Temecula didn't. I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that comment. And with that-
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And that again carries unanimously. Thank you. Takes us to the Temecula Community Services District portion of the meeting, and I'll turn it over to President Chuck Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll call the TCSD meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, let the record reflect that all of the directors are here, present and accounted for, and even looking rather sharp tonight. Do we have any public speakers? Okay, well, I'll skip right over that and get to the Community Service District consent calendar. Notice to the public, all matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Community Services District request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item number 14 is to approve the action minutes of January 27th.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Edwards and a second by the mayor. Please register your votes. And that carries 5-0. Directors' report.
I think tonight, Mr. President.
Again?
Yep.
Kind of slow season, huh?
We're just preparing for rod run. We're going to bombard you pretty soon. We're just giving you a little break.
All right. General Manager's report.
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Okay. Directors, motion to adjourn.
The move.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned on a four to one vote.
Thank you. We'll now reconvene at Temecula City Council meeting. We have item 15, which is a public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to the city council before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city clerk at or prior to the public hearing. Item 15 is the establishment of a Visit Temecula Valley Tourism Business Improvement District pursuant to the Property and Business Improvement Law of 1994.
Mr. Mayor, due to my wife's employment with Visit Temecula, I'll be recusing myself from both items 15 and 16.
Thank you. Are you going to come back to give us your final report, or are you going home?
Did he say come back?
Thank you, Erin. Who's delivering this staff report? Mr. Butler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor, councilmembers, this evening's public hearing is the final step in the legally prescribed process to form a business improvement district, or bid, pursuant to the Parking and Business Improvement District Law of 1994. The process started in December 2014 with the adoption of a resolution of intention. It continued at the most recent city council meeting with the requisite public meeting held on January 27th to allow council to hear public testimony regarding the proposed bid. As you know, a similar bid to that being considered this evening has been in place for several years with unanimous, unanimous support of the lodging businesses within the city. A 4% assessment on overnight room rates is collected and used for promotions to increase tourism and market the Temecula Valley as a tourist destination that specifically benefits lodging businesses located and operating within the city limits. The bid has been very successful and has substantially increased hotel stays here in the city. Tonight's public hearing is to tally any protest votes that may be cast, and if no majority protest is present, adopt a resolution of formation of the Visit Temecula Valley Tourism Business Improvement District per the 1994 law. The new district would function much the same as the current district, with the only significant difference being that the initial assessment will have a duration of five years instead of one year. That concludes my report, and I'm happy for you to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Any questions? Ms. City Clerk, I assume I'm supposed to ask you if we have any protest votes?
Mr. Mayor, the city clerk's office has not received any written protests today. I do have one speaker here, Ken Westmeyer.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And Mr. Westmeyer, if you'll please come up to the podium, we'd love to hear you.
All right, you'll hear no protest out of me. Except every time I come see you guys, there's cake. There's cake tonight, right? No cake tonight?
Did you, did you bring one?
Well, I would have, I should have, should have thought ahead. I'll call you guys next time.
If you didn't bring one, we don't have one. You can go ahead and start as the gentleman's time.
Good evening, Mayor Comachero, members of city council, city staff. My name's Ken Westmeyer. I'm the chairman of the current TID and the past chairman of Visit Temecula Valley. This is our new senior director of sales, Pete Brenner, started with our company today. So I wanted to introduce him to you guys since he'll be a face that you'll see quite often. With 100% support for the past eight years from the City of Temecula Hotel Industry, we request your continued support and approval for our five-year assessment district for 2015 through 2020, effective March 1st, 2015. As hotel partners in the City of Temecula, we continue to build strong working partnerships and are committed to driving sales and overnight business to Temecula. As one of the top industries in Temecula in 2014, the hotel industry generated over $54 million in lodging- $54 million in lodging revenue and 8.4% over last year's revenue. And we serviced over 1.1 million guests in our hotels, up 3.3% over last year. Our industry continues to maintain a positive outlook for 2015, and will continually, continue to be extremely competitive with rates and product offerings. Our hard work and commitment as an industry is making Temecula Valley Southern California wine country a world-class extended stay destination. We'll continue to make diligent, we'll continue to work diligently to keep our customers visiting and to offer great reasons to stay longer. We'll continue to develop very strategic and targeted campaigns while leveraging the new media opportunities that include social media, online, print and broadcasting, and product integration. We'll leverage Temecula's special events to grow our leisure market and encourage visitors to extend their stays. We'll continue to focus on the top markets for Temecula in order to increase our need periods, including midweek business, small and large groups, sports weddings, Canadian and international markets. Canadians and international. As a lodging, as a lodging district, we're committed as leaders in growing our Temecula businesses. On behalf of Visit Temecula Valley and its board of directors, we'd like to thank you very much for your support in the past and in the future. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Westmeyer. Do we have any other speakers? Okay, seeing none, then, we will close the public hearing and open it for council discussion. Mr. Washington?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, Ken, thanks again. Eight years, is that what you said it's been? So, is that 2007, 2008 we started this? 2006? Yeah. So, what we've seen, every year, you've come back, and we started out at 2%, and then, gradually went to 4%. And, and I think it's a value to kind of recap the history for folks that weren't here when we started this. Our transient occupancy tax, TOT, was low relative to, say, down in San Diego, and occupancies were not as high as we would like to see them. There was probably a downturn during the recession, climbing back out of that. But, the result of this, and the businesses that have come together and said, yes, we will charge our occupants, not residents of Temecula, but our occupants come to visit Temecula, we will charge them that extra 4%, brings it up to be in line with what they're paying in a lot of other areas in the state, and then funnel that money back into promoting the entire tourism industry in this area, has been nothing short of a tremendous success. And, and what the CBB and now, Visit Temecula Tourism has been able to achieve over that eight-year period is, has been phenomenal, and I, I'm extremely proud of, of this community, what you have done in an innovative way. Not that this is the first community to establish a business improvement district, but innovative for us, and out-of-the-box thinking that turned around to support a program that not only increases your budget to promote the region, but it actually increases taxes coming to the city as well. So, it's been a win-win, and I applaud your efforts. I've never heard a single negative mention about the organization. Everything you put out is professional and represents the city very well, and so, I'm happy, and will actually make a motion to support the staff recommendation. And thank you for your continued good work and success. I'll second that motion.
We have a second by Mr. Nigard, and, Mr. Nigard, I believe you have a comment.
Yeah, I'm just going to echo Mr. Washington's comments. There's an old saying, "A rising tide lifts all boats." And certainly, your participation in that tide rising has lifted the boats to a tourism industry of about $650 million per year in this region that many people are partaking in, creating jobs, creating more tourism, creating more economic development, and of course, filling the city's tax coffers. So, good job for your part, and I echo everything Mr. Washington said.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else? Just, just in, by way of explanation, for those who don't follow city business all the time, what this is. It's an assessment that all the hotel properties within the city agree to and assess themselves. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, there are 100% approval from the hotel properties. So, everyone agrees to assess themselves. This is not a tax that you pay. Presumably, much if not all of that extra 4% is passed on to their patrons, but those are, that's not you. Those are people from out of town who are staying in our city, and it's a way to make sure that the business just kind of lifts itself up from its own bootstraps and gets better and better and better. So, when we go ahead and vote on this, presumably approve it tonight, I want it to be clear that we're not taxing our citizens, and those who are responsible for the tax collecting and paying the tax are those who are assessing themselves 100%. So, I think that's very worthwhile and very commendable.
And I would add to that, that, that the, all the participants actually brought this to the City Council. This was not initiated by the city. This came from the hotel owners and the members of the, the hotel staying community, so.
Very true. Thank you for that. So, we do have a motion by Mr. Washington and a second by Mr. Nigard. If you would please cast your votes. That motion does carry unanimously. Item 16 is a companion item. With the action that we just took to establish the new Tourism Improvement District, the one that was in place and is now no longer relevant, needs to be sunsetted. And so, let's have a brief staff report on, on that one. Pretty simple.
You pretty much covered everything that I was going to say.
That was the staff report.
Yeah, this just initiates the process to sunset the existing bid.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Mrs. Edwards.
Second.
Second by Mr. Washington. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. And that motion then also carries unanimously. A City Manager's report tonight. Mr. Butler, either you can deliver it, or we can bring Mr. Adams back.
I'll stall while Mr. Adams returns back to the office. Apparently, we have nothing to report this evening.
Nothing more to report.
Okay, thank you. City Attorney, report?
We had a closed session. The council gave a staff direction, but there's no action to report under the Brown Act.
Thank you. We will entertain a motion to adjourn, but before we do, I'd like my colleagues' indulgence. I don't often get personal up here, but I would like to adjourn tonight's meeting in honor of my beautiful wife, Pat, who is celebrating her birthday today.
Happy birthday, Pat. We love you.
Thank you. With that, we'll take a motion.
The move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any objection?
Nope.
Seeing none, we stand adjourned.
Happy birthday.